Public hearing.
All right, it's time to call a public hearing to order. This is a public hearing for the purpose of obtaining public input on possible board action to seek a waiver under State Statute 118.38, Para 1, Part B regarding: A. waiver on the requirements of Wisconsin Statute Number 121.02, Para 1, Part F, and administrative rules promulgated by the Department regarding required instructional hours for students for the 2019-2020 school year only due to the COVID-19 public health emergency; and B. waiver on the requirements to complete educator effectiveness cycle for educators in their summary year in 2019-2020, including waivers of the requirements to meet PI 8.01 in Wisconsin Statute 115.415 and 121.02, Para 1, Part Q, for the 2019-2020 school year only due to the COVID-19 public health emergency.
So, we don't have any members of the public present, so just give us a second here. At the, at the five o'clock point, we don't now exist in any input from any of our online comments, so, at this point, we don't have any public present, so we just have to continue to hold the hearing at the moment, but just to give you just a brief explanation, according to state law, in order to ask for a waiver, we have to hold a public hearing. They were not able to, the Department of Public Instruction has created a very short process for doing this, but this is one thing that they said they could not, they could not get around with what the law has written, and so the public comment period does have to happen, so. And then both waivers, one is simply for the hours of instruction, so that's the required number of hours in the school year that we have face-to-face instruction. The other waiver is to waive the requirements to complete educator effectiveness. Educator effectiveness is our, is basically our evaluation system. It's a state-required system, and it contains a whole lot of components, quite a few of which we're not able to complete unless we're physically present with the staff. So, we're asking for both of those waivers at this time. We may come back to you with one more waiver in May depending on circumstances, but we'll cross that bridge if we have to. So, other than that, I guess we sit here and wait until 5:30, we can be the regular meeting.
For the public hearing, and now, follow order to April 8th, Board of Education Meeting, roll call. Okay, I will start with the people physically here. Ben Martinson.
Here.
Here, Hill Grant. And here, John Dobbin.
Here.
And the, where are they on? Zoom. The Zoom, Kathy McGrath.
Here.
And Leo Ponsgaard.
Here.
Thank you. First item is consider approval of the agenda.
I move.
Second.
I do.
That emotion by Kerry, seconded by Leo. Follow the favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
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 Just, just probably ask for just a, a whole vote so that we can make sure that Leo and Kathy are.
Right.
Yeah, we'll, we'll call them.
Okay, so, Dan in favor?
Yes.
Aye, Kerry in favor. John in favor?
Hi.
Leo in favor?
Yes.
Yes? Is that yes?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. And Kathy in favor?
Yes.
Okay. Agenda is approved. Moving on to item two, President's Report. All board members are in attendance, either here or remotely. Next board meetings are May 13th, Wednesday, and then Wednesday, June 10th. I don't have anything to report on legislative update. So, move on to administrative reports. School District COVID-19 Response, Superintendent Cronin.
First of all, I just want to make sure that Kathy and Leo, you can hear me?
I can hear you.
Yes. Okay. So, well, you know, you go back to Friday, March 13th, and very late in the day, the governor closed schools for the following week, starting on that Wednesday. We were in communication late that afternoon with Wisconsin Rapids, Macusa, and some of our other local public schools, and talked about the idea of closing those, the two days earlier in that week, Monday and Tuesday, to give our staff time to prepare for that, the longer-term closure. Additionally, you know, we had no idea this was coming down until about 3:30 on that Friday, and, but, I guess the feeling from things that have been hearing and discussions with the Health Department, we knew something might be coming along those lines, just not sure when. We took an additional step on that Friday, and we actually had a locker cleanout at the middle school, high school building, and the elementary staff had worked to really get kids to take books home that Friday and materials. And so, even on that Friday, when we were still in session, we were working kind of on the idea that we may not be coming back to school. You know, since, since we've closed, you know, we've been closed now, we had a week of spring break, but it's really, we're going on four weeks since that order was issued. And I guess I've taken the position that we need to be flexible and responsive. Our teaching staff has worked from home generally. We've asked them to be available to students and/or other staff members between 8:00 and 3:00 on days that we were regularly scheduled to have school. We've asked that they provide students with educational materials and opportunities. Our council, our school counseling staff as well has been available and has made connections with students and families to answer questions and provide resources. In our high school, all of our students are issued a Chromebook or other device, typically it's a Chromebook, in our one-to-one initiative, but we've also issued Chromebooks and other devices to numerous middle school and elementary school families that needed those. And so, we've gone into stock of, sometimes they're older machines, but we've issued what we can to those families that need. At the high school level, our administrative and counseling staff has made doubly sure to reach out to students who are at risk of failing a class, to see what we can do to assist those students to the greatest extent possible, and reviewed the status of all of our seniors to make sure that they are making progress toward graduation. While no decision has been made yet in terms of grading and how that will look, we are discussing with staff, with other schools, we're looking at practices that others are using, with the possibility of moving to a pass/fail grading system for this semester. It's clear that the rigor of the work and the difficulty in assessing students puts into some question then the extent that we could say that, for instance, an A in Biology this year, this semester, would be the equivalent as it was a year ago. You know, there's, there's no, there's no way that those things are equivalents at this Colleges and universities are in the same boat, and they have indicated that they understand that, that grading is posing some difficulty. A lot of colleges have gone to pass/fail systems for that purpose, and so they understand where we're at, and so, in terms of an effect, negative effect on students in terms of admission to schools and universities, we don't believe that will have a negative effect. We've also discussed the possibility, if we do a pass/fail system, freezing grade point averages at their calculation this past January, so that those GPAs would not be negatively affected at that point. If we do pass/fail, we typically, in a few areas that we've done pass/fail already in years past, it doesn't affect the GPA positively or negatively, you know, so it just has that effect, it just kind of freezes things where they were. It also will not affect our determination of a salutary and valedictorian for a senior class, or scholarships, or other things. Most of that had to be done already, so, while it's not ideal, we're hoping that if we move to this, it would minimize the effect that there, that it would actually have in terms of both inflation and/or deflation on a standard grading system that might happen. Our support staff, our aides, and I guess, let me back up on the grading piece, more to come on that, because we're still, we're really, we're talking with others, we are trying to get input from as many sources to see what really will work for this semester. Our support staff aides, during the first week of the closure, most of them were converted to temporary cleaning personnel to assist our maintenance staff in a deep clean of our buildings. The goal was to disinfect as many touchable surfaces as possible, and they have achieved that. This was certainly appreciated work by, by also of our, of our aides and the work they did, I certainly appreciate that. They did a fabulous job, they did a remarkable job, and a very quick and thorough cleaning. At this time, our aides are now assisting and supporting the teaching staff and students, especially in our special education area. That was one of the areas that the teaching staff was really feeling like, like the heat in terms of trying to constantly connect with the students and provide special education services. Despite the closure, we still have to account for our special education services, and so that, we do not want to be in a position where we would be having to provide what's called compensatory service, which means if later on, a special education student said, hey, I didn't receive X, Y, and Z, they could come back and ask us for compensatory services, which means we're spending a whole lot of time making up, and so we're trying to do everything we can to avoid that, and our support staff is assisting us in that. The maintenance staff has been busy continuing with the deep cleaning of both buildings. All of the carpeted areas in, in the middle school, high school building have been cleaned. They are now cleaning the carpeted areas at the elementary school, and taking on other projects in terms of cleaning and set, and dealing with that, what I would call maybe is our summer cleaning procedures. We have had a couple of contractor crews, we've kept them to minimum sizes. We've got a flooring crew that is working on a project that was previously scheduled to do flooring at the elementary, and we've tried to minimize that crew. It has been a crew of one or two, that is all. It has been the same crew since day one, as well as we've worked with Goodwin Construction locally as part of that project, and their crew has been small, small numbers and the same people. So, we've worked with some small groups, and again, we've maintained, you know, worked with our staff onsite to maintain the social distancing guidelines. Food service, this group has really stood out. I would say at this point, all of our staff has stood out and is really trying to step up to the plate, but this group in particular, last week alone, they served over 2,100 meals. Those are both breakfasts and lunches over the course of five days. This week, they're probably on pace to do more, so it is, it has been quite the switch. It is much more labor-intensive to prepare grab-and-go or take-out meals than it is to serve food on a serving line, and so this group has really stepped up what they have done. However, next week, they're going to look at changing up in order to probably do two things. One, gain some efficiency, and number two, gain some sanity, and deal with the ordering, the problems we've had with ordering and other things. So, they're going to, three days a week next week, Monday will be, they'll get, anybody who comes Monday will get breakfast and lunch. If you come on Tuesday, you'll get breakfast and lunch for two days, and if you come on Thursday, you'll get breakfast and lunch for two days. So, they have, they've been flexible, they have been creative. They had a day last week where, without warning, a food truck was pushed back a day, and so they were hoping to have a food truck on a Wednesday, and unfortunately, it didn't come until Thursday, and so they've had to be flexible and creative, and they have done so. Administratively, each of us has had much to do. Ms. Christie is working to navigate the waters of the special education side. Mrs. Schroeder working with, to make sure our high school students are on track. Additionally, both administrators and our counseling staff have worked to make sure that we've stayed connected with students, staff, and families. We've had some instances where we've had families not connecting with us, and so we've, including taking trips to households to see if, what's going on, if families know that we're trying to connect with them, and so our staffs have done that. We have attended multiple, multiple virtual meetings and remote meetings, and worked with our legal counsel in implementing the new CARES Act. Mrs. Miller has been involved in that specifically, and working feverishly to make sure that we know what all the provisions of the employee leaves and things are that have changed, as well as changes to the election. As you know, we cannot see the election results that we would normally see. We are not allowed to see those until next week, Monday, and then we'll have to figure out how we're going to canvas that election, because we still have to do that at that point. I've had multiple meetings with CISA, with the School Boards Association, and with our legal counsel on a lot of different pieces of this, as well as county human services and health services, so, just trying to coordinate services to the community. Today's status on the closure, to say the least, we're at least in a closure through the duration of the health, declared health emergency, or unless the governor issues an order ending it sooner. The governor's state trade home order is unique for schools. For instance, the school board is able to meet and conduct its government functions. The state superintendent of schools, a week ago, sent out a communication telling us to prepare for the possibility that we will end school in this current status, that there will not be a return at this point. Now, that has not been determined yet for sure, they're just telling us to prepare for that possibility. That certainly leaves a whole bunch of questions. How do we carry out commencement, senior dessert, will there be a sports season? During this, we have communicated to students and families that we will carry on as many of these activities when we are able to, and to the extent we are able to, and that some of these activities may look different this year, they may have to. Quite simply, there's a lot of unanswered questions. Finally, in terms of our budget, we will not likely spend at the moment everything we have budgeted for this year. We are working at this time to put together the pieces to get a clear picture of where this leaves us for end of the year. There have been some items we will spend more on. We've spent more on cleaning supplies. We, you know, so there are some give and take on this, but, you know, in the big picture, we will probably not spend exactly what we budgeted this year. That is, that is likely. We have been advised through a couple of different sources at the state level to think about making sure that we build our fund balance at the end of this year, if we have that ability, because it is very clear that the budget picture for next year is very uncertain. We've been told to plan three scenarios budget-wise at this point. This is advice from CISA and through our VOSTA organization, what's called VOSTA, the Administrators Association, basically plan three budget scenarios. One is, plan on if the budget's going to move forward as if it was already, the two-year budget, the way it currently is, that calls for an increase in our revenue limit. They said, plan that, make sure we have that in case nothing changes. Number two, plan for a budget that is zero, meaning there is no increase in revenue limit, that it is a zero budget, so basically, it'd be the same budget next year that we're operating with this year. And three, plan for at least a $50, plan for a $50 decrease per pupil. For us, that equates to about $25,000, but there is a whole bunch of other effects on that in the overall budget, so, you know, so at this point, that budget picture is not entirely clear. One item that I will mention, and is going to come up in discussion later when we talk transportation in our budget, is there is a part of the CARES Act, the COVID CARES Act from the federal government, that is called Educational Stabilization. I'm not sure the total dollar amount, but the district may receive an additional $55,000 in revenue this year under that stabilization fund, so that is going to be key to maybe some decisions later on in looking at transportation and some other things. That is the bulk of my report, and I'm sorry, I had a lot, but I wanted to make sure that you were aware of, and I guess I would open it up if you have questions.
No, I just like the common theme, you know, everybody did a good job, they done teachers, sports staff, janitors, cooks, and they also did nothing but put things on, families, everything, so the whole staff did a great job.
Yeah, I think that was it, I'll do. Okay.
I think it's really important that we make sure that when this is all over, with the next, end of this spring or next fall, the district, in whatever fashion we possibly can, make our staff and our students and our families and the community aware of how much we appreciate their efforts and their ability to cooperate and roll with a bunch and just kind of get through this, because it's really taken, yeah, this is unprecedented, this is something that we, there's no way to plan for it, just have to suck it up and do it, and it looks like that's what the vast majority of people are doing, and it's turned very fashion, so I really think we need to, we need to extend, extend recognition and praise in whatever fashion we can, for most people, most deserved.
All right. Moving on to the consent agenda, number four, motion to approve the minutes of the past meeting, March 11, 2020.
I move to Kathy.
I second it. Motion by Kathy, seconded by Kerry. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
I'll do a quick roll call vote. Dan in favor?
I am in favor.
Kerry, I am in favor. John, are you in favor?
Yes.
Kathy in favor?
Yes.
Leo in favor?
Yes.
Next item, power number. You can still say it that way, and just, I'll take it from there. All right. Next item is consider approval of financial reports. We have some gifts.
I have a list today. The first one I want to mention is Bill and Connie Nieman of Nieman Photography donated a beautiful desk for the library that is now up for, that Ann Ashenbrenner uses, and it works fantastic for her, and looks very nice, and we wanted to thank them. We had another anonymous donation, $20, to the families, helping families again. Mr. Cronin mentioned this last week, but officially reporting on the booster, Crowe Edwards Athletic Booster Club for their $12,000 donation towards the scoreboards. Jeanne Oliver donated hand-knit hats to the elementary school, and then we had several donations to the math day that obviously, at this point, I think has already been canceled, but Jaws and Concrete for $100, Megan and Matthew Comer for $500, the Hildebrants and Comfort Air for $100. We had a $500 donation to the library from Raymond Weber, and we also had a donation to our food service department from Orco.
Lots of good donations.
What was, what was the donation for Nieman Photography?
A desk from their office, that, you know, they closed their, their studio, so it's, yep, it's very nice.
That, that part came to cover, that was, that was the one that donated.
Okay.
We did, we should also mention, we've had in-kind donations of materials.
Oh, they, yes, that's right. Bay Publishing has donated art supplies that we have given to the students.
The Wisconsin State Cranberry Spirits Association has donated dried, dried cranberries. The Detless and family and some other cranberry families have donated juice in large quantities, so, some good in-kind donations for food service as well.
All right, that report, so, approval of financial report. Ben in favor?
Ben in favor.
Kerry is in favor. John, are you in favor?
Yes.
Leo, are you in favor? Kathy, are you in favor?
Yes.
All in favor. All right, motion Kerry. Moving on to new business. Consider approval of 2020-2021 Certified Staffing Plan.
I'd recommend approval of the plan, so we can move forward with our statutory requirements and notifications and things that we need to get done at the end of the month with our certified staff. As I presented last month, we have no major additions at this point to our staff that we are planning. We may, at some point, ask further consideration to providing one to two more hours of intervention at the middle level, but beyond what you have on that staffing plan, no, we're not asking for another science teacher, English teacher, elementary teacher, anything at this point, nobody asks me to approve that plan.
I make motion that we approve the 2021 Certified Staffing Plan.
I'll second.
All right, motion I second. Any other discussion?
Because there, I know it's hard to, I must be determined under the present circumstances, prior to the shutdown order, what was our rate with that, the middle of March when we shut down?
We had about 465 sitting in our seats.
And to your knowledge, there hasn't been any, any subsequent change of that?
No, not necessarily, I know, I think we've, to be, I think we've lost a couple of students since then, but not a, not a big loss of students. I think we've had a family move since then, and I know we have another family that had planned to move long before this, they haven't yet, but there's always been a couple of movements and move-outs since we go along.
It's told that, that one of the corollaries, of course, the spring and summer is that, that when people not paying attention to actually bringing their kids into register or to school, that come fall, we don't suddenly discover a, a big plot of new folk that we didn't know were there, which could happen, and of course, it could be out of control everywhere, it could be a, a lot of people that we weren't planning on, so I guess all we can do is be prepared to be flexible and roll with the punches and use the people we have.
Okay, so, in favor, Dan?
Dan is in favor.
Kerry, I am in favor. John in favor?
Yes.
Leo in favor? Kathy in favor?
Yes.
I heard it in the, in your computer, but not in this one, I don't know. All right, motion Kerry, five zero. Number seven, consider approval of resolution authorizing district administrator to make an application to Department of Public Instruction for waiver of the following. A. waiver on the requirements of Wisconsin Statute 121.02, Para 1, Part F, and administrative rules promulgated by the Department regarding required instructional hours for students for the 2019-2020 school year only due to the COVID-19 public health emergency; and B. waiver on the requirements to complete educator effectiveness cycle for educators And B, waiver of the requirements to complete an educator effectiveness cycle for educators in their summary year in 2019-20, including waivers of the requirements to meet PI 8.01 and Wisconsin Statute 115.415 and 121.02, pair one, pair two, for the 2019-2020 school year only due to the COVID-19 public health emergency.
I'd recommend your adoption of that. Second.
Motion by Kathy, seconded by Leo to approve the resolution authorizing district administrator to make an application to Department of Public Instruction. Roll call. Ben in favor?
Ben in favor.
Kerry is in favor as well. John in favor?
Yes.
Kathy in favor?
Yes.
Leo in favor?
Yes.
Motion Kerry. Moving on to number eight, consider approval of Health Insurance Plan with Security Health for 2020-2021.
I'd recommend your approval of our plan for next year. This was, you know, each year we go for renewal, and the renewal rate came in at 2.5%. According to the calculations that we get from security help, they had, they, the calculated renewal was actually at nine, however, they were able to swirl that down to 2.5%. Last year, if you remember, we had zero. There are districts in, in the region that have had upwards of 15 and 16% renewals. So quite frankly, in light of the current health crisis, 2.5% is probably as good as we're going to get, and we should probably jump on that. Amen.
I make a motion to consider approval of Health Insurance Security Plan. I will second it. Motion and second. Any other discussion? All right, roll call. In favor, Ben?
Ben in favor.
Kerry in favor, yes. John in favor?
Yes.
Leo in favor?
Yes.
Kathy in favor?
Yes.
All right, motion Kerry. Number nine, consider approval of additional cyber insurance coverage.
Okay, so whatever I wrote to you in my original report to you earlier this week, kind of toss that out for the moment. However, I will say this, our current coverage is very limited and covers us only up to $50,000. That's it. That's our complete cyber package. We've been working on looking at, at some changes to this going into this next year. However, with our increased use of technology all over the place in our district at the moment, this is something we asked our insurance carrier to, to, to quote us on, and we were originally looking at increasing our coverage with EMC, however, that only, that only, it's a very limited policy and does not cover us for very much. So we've actually had a totally different policy quoted to us. This is something we wanted to add. It is a policy called cyber liability. It is from a company, Chubb is the name of the carrier. It is a million-dollar policy. It covers all kinds of different security breaches. One thing that I want to point out to you that it will also cover, that our current coverage does not, this also covers extortion on the cyber end. One of our local school districts a year ago was extorted for somewhere near $500,000, $600,000. Basically, what happens in that is your system is hacked into, they take over your system and basically tell you you need to pay it, otherwise they won't give you back your system. Now, you can try to work through law enforcement, but the problem is, your system's down while you're working through law enforcement, and it could be weeks and weeks and months. And so this policy also covers that. It is certainly more than what we are paying for now. Quite a bit more when you look at it from a standpoint of our current plan, costs us $444, but only gives us $50,000 worth of coverage. This new plan would cover us for $1 million, and is $2,047. Can we cover that in this year's budget? Yes, we can. We can cover that policy. And again, this brings us up to $1 million. For instance, if we have a data breach and we get sued due to the data breach, our current coverage is $50,000, that's all it covers us for. So the district is then trying to figure out how to pay out the rest of that. This at least covers us for quite a bit more. So my recommendation is we increase our coverage.
Mr. Cronin, can I just make the comment that this will be separate from our, it will not renew with our other liability insurances, we'll always now come on basically saying approve this, it would be an annual starting tomorrow.
So it would be basically dropping our EMC insurance that we currently have, moving to this other plan.
So it's really a net of 16?
Yes. But the level of coverage, like I said, we currently aren't even covered on the extortion side, which has hit schools in Wisconsin, so. I heard you correctly, you said this does cover ransomware, correct? That, that example that you gave? Could you re-ask your question, Leo?
Does cover ransomware type?
Yeah, that's, that's the cyber extortion, yes. Right, that, that's what you're, you know, your echo sometimes makes it hard for me to hear exactly what you're saying, but, no, okay, but that's fine, that's what I thought you said.
I'll consider motion, or make a motion for approval for the cyber insurance coverage. I have the one.
I can, Kathy.
All right, motion and second. Roll call. Favor, Ben?
Ben in favor.
Kerry is in favor. John in favor?
Yes.
Kathy in favor?
Yes.
And Leo in favor?
Yes.
Motion Kerry. Number 10, consider approval of a motion to temporarily suspend policy number 0131.11, bylaw and policy. As allowed by this policy, the provision requiring that proposed amendments to policies appear at least on two successive board agendas prior to adoption.
So you're basically going to suspend your typical rules and policy to allow us to adopt an amendment to a policy in one meeting?
I make motion that we approve the motion, or approve the temporary suspension, to temporary suspend the policy 0131.11.
I'll second it. Motion and a second. Any other discussion?
There's one where I said, I make a motion and second.
All right, roll call. Ben in favor?
Ben in favor.
Kerry, he is in favor. John in favor?
Yes.
Kathy in favor?
Yes.
And Leo, are you in favor?
Yes.
All right, motion Kerry, five zero. Moving on to 11, consider approval of amendment to policy number 0167.1, voting in order to allow future board meetings to be held remotely if necessary.
I'm, I'm losing sound here. I can't, I can't hear you, John.
Okay.
Oh, there you go.
Better? Yeah, I'll speak up.
So moved, Kathy.
Should we make a motion?
Yeah.
Run, run on the level?
Number one, yeah.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Yeah, this basically allows us to hold meetings remotely in the future.
Yeah, this, yeah, this really bumps up our policy on that to, right now, we can do the voting remotely, but to hold a whole meeting remotely if we had to, this really bumps that policy up to allow that.
All right, roll call. Ben, are you in favor?
Ben in favor.
Kerry, I am in favor. John, are you in favor?
Yes.
Leo, are you in favor?
Yes.
Kathy in favor?
Yes.
All right, five zero, motion Kerry. Number 12, discussion on remainder of 2019-2020 Lammers Bus Contract.
So I just wanted to bring this to your attention. Lammers has asked that we continue to pay our base rate at 100% of the contract for the remainder of this school year or as long as this situation exists. They sent a letter that I included in your board packet explaining their purposes for asking for that. Lammers is not covered under the CARES Act in terms of, of receiving some of those small business benefits because of their size. They actually have, that, that starts at if you're 500 employees or fewer, and Lammers actually has more than that. So there are some provisions of this CARES Act that they're not able to take advantage of. However, one of the provisions of the CARES Act dealing with education, and if we receive educational stabilization funds, is that to the greatest extent possible, we pay our contracts. Now that leaves a little bit of wiggle room as to what our greatest extent possible is. That probably has to do with how our budget situation is. Now, what Lammers is not doing, they're not obviously charging us for fuel, so we're not paying any fuel charges. They're not charging us for extracurricular trips that are not happening. They are not charging us for field trips that are not happening. So all those things are gone. They're, they're asking for the base rate. They have asked for special education base rate as well because we do have one bus that specifically services special education because we share programming with NACUSA. The bus transports students in a particular program from our district to NACUSA, and we pay for that. However, we are not clear at the moment that we are able to use any funds budgeted in special education to pay for services not rendered. So if they're not rendering the service, it's not really clear that we can actually pay for that service in our special education side of our budget. The state has said on our front end that we can't. So our general funds budget that we could pay for services that are not necessarily being rendered. Now, Lammers would like to continue to employ their drivers at the rates that they were employing them previously, and as explained in their, so that would allow them to continue to employ those drivers, so the drivers would not be on unemployment. Additionally, the drivers, or additionally, they're able to continue to pay their insurance on their buses, make repairs as they need to because they do have repair and maintenance that they do in the summer, and upgrade buses as on their regular schedule. So it allows Lammers' operation to at least continue to some degree. I am not recommending a specific action at this time, I really wanted to hear if you had questions. What I would say is maybe this, I continue with the discussion with them, there have been districts that have negotiated this down, but there are also districts paying 100%. It is all over the board. So wanted to get some of your thoughts.
What is the additional cost for the special education portion? That wasn't included in the words that we said, I do not believe.
No, and so the, the special education side?
I mean, I assume it's a fairly small.
It is smaller, give me a second here.
Ballpark it.
I'm going to ballpark it for you in about two seconds. Um, I got a break. Let's call it about $12,000.
A little bit more than I would think it might be.
Yeah, 10 to 12, somewhere in that range was what was remaining. You said 10 to 12,000 for the special money? For special education for the remainder of this current school year, if we pay them every day that they are servicing special education students. That's a ballpark. Ballpark, that's, that's, that's in addition to the figures you wanted to get, so it's a little bit. Yeah, but what we're saying is that we're not sure that we could pay the special education at all. So. Is there, is there a timeline in terms of whether we could discover what the legal requirements are or not coming? We have been asking, and there has not been a clear answer. The best, on the special education side, the best indication we have is part of our special education funding comes through Medicare. And the Medicare people are very particular about what you spend your money on, and because we get reimbursements through Medicare, and some of that could go toward helping transport Medicare is very particular about if you are saying you're providing a service, you've provided the service. So we have about $35,000 left on our front end side of our, of our budget for Lammers at this point.
We definitely need new services moving forward in years to come, students are back, so you've got to keep researching, but we need to make sure they have been a good company to work with.
They have been a very good company to work with. I don't want to create a bad relationship there, and they have worked with us in the past in negotiating the rates and things. So, you know, I definitely, as I communicate with them, you know, we can, how do I want to say this, we could make the next payment and still negotiate down from there. And so even making the next payment's not an issue.
I think whatever we don't pay now, we'll end up paying later anyway.
Yes.
It's making it a lot easier for them to continue to operate and be seen as, and get back to the normal.
And I can, you know, from your discussion here, I can at least get a sense of where you're headed with this and just continue to communicate with Lammers and continue to do the research on the special education side.
We pay, we pay the base rate, and we still save $12,000, over, over $12,000.
Just on special education if we're not?
Well, no, no, I mean, I read on the, uh...
Oh.
No, I should say, say, we don't use three, three, 600 that's in the budget if we pay 32,000, and then there's still 8,000.
Yeah, from some of those original figures, yeah.
So, so.
Yeah, we'll, we're going to see a savings on our transportation costs, even if we get back to school later, we may, we're going to see a savings on our transportation costs.
Can I just jump in on that special education part of it, too?
Yeah.
This is Kara, sorry. Just because I've been in a lot of these special ed director meetings, and that is still kind of hanging out there as DPI kind of waits to hear from the federal government as well because there's a lot of federal laws that trickle down into the state special education laws. So those things kind of, they have to wait for the feds to make decisions that then trickle down to the state. And since we do share the cost of that special ed cost with NACUSA, we kind of want to be a united front on that and kind of make that decision together with NACUSA since we have just caught.
Yep. I, I think it's really important that we, we try to maintain as good a relationship with Lammers as we can. If, I mean, all of the bus companies have big trouble hiring drivers, and if, I mean, I know we don't have a lot of bus runs and we don't have a, we're not a big district, but if, if, if we get back in operation this spring or more likely in the fall, and Lammers has lost their personnel because they, they weren't able to keep the drivers alive and they went and found work elsewhere, nobody, nobody is the better for it. Lammers isn't the better for it, we aren't the better for it, especially if we, we have inexperienced rookie drivers who, who, you know, don't, don't have the experience that a person would have who's already on the roof. So I'd be in favor of, of simply looking at continuing some sort of payment if we can negotiate it on a global party, but I really, I think Lammers, I think Lammers' claim is basically legitimate. True. Well, I will continue to work with them, and obviously it's, you know, in good faith to keep them as a, as, you know, as a contractor, doing the best job they can for us, so. doing the best job they can for us, so.
Moving on to number 13, discussion of co-curricular salaries for the spring 2020 athletic season.
This would also, you know, be an item where the only season that officially started was track. We had about a week worth of tracking. Now, our coaching staffs in the other sports were certainly busy getting ready for their seasons to start prepping things up. And so, you know, it's, this is one of these pieces too. At some point, we will have to make a decision where to go with the co-curricular contracts for the spring sports this spring and determine what you want to do with those. School districts here too are all over the board. One of our neighboring school districts is probably not paying their contracts. Another one of our neighboring school districts, my understanding is, they will be paying their contracts. Other, I've heard of schools paying a percentage of their contracts. So they are all over the board on this. Again, we could come back to this in May, but I thought maybe a little discussion on what your thoughts were moving forward.
What is, what is included?
One is paying and one is indicated they might not be paying. So they're at opposite ends of the spectrum. I'm not going to say where that is from which one yet, but.
I mean, it's always nice to have a somewhat consistent, you know, front in terms of districts that are closely, you know, geographically positioned outside.
I'd like to see. I'd like to see you maybe reach out, talk to the coaches, you know, all the sports, what you're doing, activities that have been postponed this year and their struggle probably with future dated numbers. Work with the coaches and see if there's any way we can, if they want their wages, they don't, or maybe they're interested in taking some of this money, put it in programs to make them a little better. It's different things to try to boost them up for next year. It's going to be tough and athletes don't move away for a year if that's what does happen. Try to bring some more excitement back to those different sports. But, you know, talk to the coaches and see what they're, if they'd be interested in. I don't know if it's possible to take funds and.
It's. Well, what probably makes it complicated is some of the equity issues involved. Because, you know, and each sport is different and there, I don't want to say it. You know, different sports sometimes are funded at different levels because of equipment needs and whatnot. But, you know, at least in terms of, you know, when we've got baseball and softball, there's got to be equity in the funding there. You know, so those, there has to be some equity in what's going on there. So when a decision is made, it's got to be kind of the same decision across the board. Otherwise, that really complicates it.
You can't have one taking the money and one.
At the end of the day, you really can't because we can't, we have to have kind of a unified decision on that.
And we can't roll that those funds over to next year either.
Yeah, that's one thing we can't do. We can't roll it to next year. Is there a possibility we could do something different with some of it this year? Maybe, yes.
Yeah, and I think that is. Talk to the coaches, you know, different tracks and baseball and softball and see if everybody has opinion on that and golf.
Maybe we can do a little polling of the coaches and see where they're at with things, so.
I would think, to give them a percentage, I would think that we would pay them the full amount. I mean, there's a lot of time that is spent, obviously during the season that were added, but there's also time spent before the season. So I think something is being proper, but I don't think the whole salary. Not that it's a huge amount anyway.
The WIA has not ruled on the spring sports seasons yet. And I suspect at some point they will. I know they're trying to hold out. And that's why I put this as discussion only at this point. Let's say that by happenstance, we get released to come back to school in May. Maybe we're having a truncated couple of weeks of something. And if we are, then the board can kind of make that determination then. But, yeah, I will, I will certainly be looking more at what the other schools are doing and I can also talk to the coaches where they're at with things, just in their thought process, so. It is budgeted money. It's, we've had the revenue for it. So at least in that sense, yeah, there might be some possibility this budget year to do some things yet.
Maybe it's important to take care of the coaching staff and build an output.
Yep.
Okay, very good. Next item is designate board representative to CESE 5 Annual Representative Convention. What's the convention this year?
It's usually in Wisconsin Rapids. We just got notice that it's still on the calendar for March, or Thursday, May 14th. However, they will likely be changing that or maybe even doing something virtual or something. So they're either going to push it out or do something virtual. And it's an evening event.
I went, thought two here, I think. I'd be willing to be the representative again if nobody else objects.
Be great, John.
I make a motion to make a motion on this?
Yeah.
I'll make the motion to consider John, President John Dotman, to be the CESE 5 representative.
Second. Motion and a second.
Do we vote on that or is this one?
Yeah, you can vote on that after.
You got a motion.
Ben, are you in favor of making that?
Ben in favor.
Okay, Kerry, I am also in favor. John, do you vote on, you sign? John in favor? No, abstaining. Kathy in favor? And Leo, are you in favor?
Yes.
I figured so much as that other comment. Okay. Next item is opportunity of individual board member comment. Start with Ben.
Like you said again, just want to thank the teachers, all the staff members, the launch. Everybody's doing a great job doing this time, I guess. And also lots of the parents out there that are watching. Thank for the parents. There's a lot going on, trying to do the work and try to keep your kids' education up and work with teachers, so. Food goes out the way to keep loving along and hopefully this will move on and either this or next, we'll be back at 100%.
I will reiterate that appreciation of all the staff and all their work that they've done during this time. It's an unusual time, definitely. Guess you got to go out there and hike a bunch. That's all you can do. Enjoy the weather when it's here, enjoy time with your family. We'll be back to work fully soon. Kathy?
Okay. Kathy?
Kudos again to the entire staff, administrative, teaching staff, support staff. I think everyone is really doing a super job. And from like what I hear and read, I think our district has really got things under control.
Thank you. Leo?
Again, I'd be redundant to express what everybody else has, but I agree completely. I'd also like to recognize and thanks and thank all those citizens of the district who came out and voted yesterday or voted ahead of time in very difficult conditions and the people who worked in the polls under very difficult conditions. Being civilly responsible in times like this, but the political atmosphere is toxic and the voters are struggling and get people wet in the polls. They're to be commended for being as responsible as they were and their support is appreciated.
I'm just going to add something to what you said with everybody voting. So just for knowledge, when I voted very late in the day, about quarter to eight, I was 525 and there was two or other people behind me, so I know for sure 527, which is a very great turnout considering it's usually around 800 or 800.
I'm not, I'm not getting that number at all.
Said there was about, when I voted, there was 527 people that had voted. And that was at just a little bit to eight, maybe quarter to eight. So I thought that was good, very good turnout, given some of the uncertainty and the fact that it was usually in the 850. Yeah. I think that's the time around here and stuff.
Turned out like a presidential, be around 800 to 900.
Well, our poll here seems to always turn out 800 and what the occasion.
And there's a lot of absentee.
Yeah, right, right, right. So still maybe, but I just thought people might find that interesting. Good night.
Does that 527, that's just any person voting to it?
Well, I'm assuming because that's what my number was when I turned in my ballot. So I don't think that is. I don't think so either.
No, I'm sure that there's probably several hundred, that's a few dollars. In addition to that, so then that total is astonishing considering the confusion and the weather and the coronavirus. So good, I really appreciate that.
All right, I'd also like to echo what everyone else is saying. Good job, teachers and staff. Everyone involved with, I made concern with all this was the teachers continue to teach and students continue to learn and that's still happening, so that's very good. Thanks for everyone's efforts during this time. Okay, with that, our future board meetings are May 13th and June 10th. So anyone, doesn't have any other comments? Motion to adjourn. Second. Motion and second. Ben, are you in favor of adjourn?
Ben is in favor.
Kerry, I'm in favor. As soon as John votes, we're officially done, so. John, are you in a favor?
Yes.
Leo, are you in favor?
Go ahead.
Kathy?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I'm going to end the meeting.